Good evening. The City Council Meeting of July twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five is hereby called to order at six oh-two P M. The invocation will be led by the City Clerk.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that your God is always and satisfy the needs and need to be met during this meeting. Please provide strength to the council, has to make tough decisions. Help us work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask this in your loving name. Amen.
Is there anyone here who is a military veteran or currently serving in the military? Please stand or raise your hand so that we may recognize you. Please rise for the flag salute. Will the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Farfan. Councilmember Roa. Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio.
Here.
Mayor DePaolo.
He's present.
We have a quorum.
Councilmember Vargas has asked to be excused for tonight's meeting. Will the City Clerk please, please provide brief information relating to public comments?
A member, the public may submit a public comment via written correspondence or by submitting an e-comment through the city's website. Another way to participate is through our Zoom option. The Zoom meeting ID and passcode are in the agenda packet. Lastly, a member, the public may participate in person in the City Council Chamber. Public comment is now open.
Good evening. I'm Irene from the library. I want to invite everybody again to come on over to our library. We're gonna be having a handful of events. We have our storytime with Environmental Nature Center. It will be featuring live animals. That's gonna be this Friday, July twenty-five, at three P M. And I believe it's perfect timing because I saw that there's the pool party happening at the Le Ware Pool. I believe that was at noon to three, so you can go to that and then come by to the library afterwards for the storytime. We're also gonna be having our Henna program that's targeted towards our teens. That's gonna be Saturday, August second, at twelve noon. We invite everybody from the community to come out to all of these events. And of course, to just come by the library if there's anything you need. We're always happy to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable City Mayor and City Council, Dandy and staff. We come here, Renee is here with me, the Firekeeper. I wanted just to give you guys kind of a little bit of an update on, on the friendship powwow that we're having on August, Saturday, August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Everything going, isn't going very well. We haven't had a chance, you know, our mayor committed for us to walk to the businesses, to ask for sponsorship. But we're doing, I guess, the technology way now. Submitting through emails for corporations. And we're getting a lot of interest, a lot. And I think for the first time in all the years that I, when I worked there, this being the twenty-fifth, this is the first time we've ever, I've ever seen it like this, even before the casino. It might be because of the situations that we're on, all the communities, because of ICE and all the stuff that's going on. A lot of people are willing to contribute and a lot of people are willing to assist and help and attend. I think, like I said, for all the years that I've, I've done it before, we're getting a lot of nonprofit organizations that are willing to come in and hand out information about that and to assist the community, which is great. We're working on, doing a little bit more of the video social media propaganda so that way we could get all the younger generations. But I did wanted to share the flyers with you guys and also the sponsorship there. That's why we're going around and handing out to the, hopefully, to the businesses with our mayor and anybody that wants to assist. But at, at the same time, like with social media, I think that's what's gonna get them to help out and to come in and to see what it is. We're working on also on, on a video so that way we could share with Dr. Silo, the Superintendent from ABC. So then that way we could hopefully have some of the fourth grade classes or any class that wants to attend. So that way I know they have to do their projects for fourth grade to attend. We also gonna share with Ms. Macias from Fede, obviously, that's her school. And she was asking if she could have the eighth grade class to attend, of course. So we're planning on having, you know, like, like I said, Renee is here with us, someone from the natives to, to speak and talk about the culture prior, the beginning of the powwow on Saturday, and introducing it actually to the powwow. There's a real nice video on YouTube that we wanna introduce everyone to that was done by Uncle Jimmy, now that he's passed, that talks about the buffalo there and over there in Catalina Island, taking them back home. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, that it's a positive thing. And we're still having our meetings over there at Valentinos. We're having on August fourth, Monday, August fourth, at four-thirty. Everyone's welcome if you guys wanna join us. Thank you, guys. If you have any questions, you guys got my information. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no members of the, there are no members of the public on Zoom.
Next item, proclamation and certificates. There are no proclamation and certificate for tonight. Up next is presentation. We have one presentation tonight, update on the Youth at Work Program by Christina Torison, Y E P Youth Employment Program Coordinator.
Mayor, Council, Mayor, City Council and staff, thank you for giving me this opportunity once again to give you an update on the Y E P program. I'm Christina Torison and I've been your Y E P coordinator since February of last year. So this year, there's lots that has happened. Our agenda here includes talking about the Y E P program, the challenges and successes, the process for applying. We're gonna look at some numbers. We're gonna look at some of the businesses that support this program. We're gonna look at some pictures on recognition and youth at work. We have a fun youth survey, things we are working on. And then lastly, we're gonna have, we're gonna open it up for questions. So about the Y E P program, the Los Angeles County Jobs Program was launched in two thousand and six and renamed Youth at Work since, in two thousand and seventeen. The city of Hawaiian Gardens has been collaborating with Silico since two thousand and fourteen, so we have a longstanding partnership. Youth at Work provides training, employment, and supportive services to our residents here in Hawaiian Garden that are between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four and have a right to work. Some of the populations that we serve are school dropout, Cal Works, foster, homeless, transitioning aged youth, low-income households, LGBTQ, pregnant or parenting, have a disability, or are English language learners. The youth will fall under three funding categories, other underserved youth, system-involved youth, and Cal Works. They will receive a hundred and sixty hours, which include personal enrichment training and paid work experience. They have gotten a raise, the previous rates were, rate was seventeen twenty-eight and it's now seventeen eighty-seven per hour. And they get an opportunity to work for an employer partnered with the program. So how do they apply? They can pick up an application here at the City Hall, or they can also download it from our website. The application needs to be completed and submitted with some of the required documents, and that includes social security card, birth certificate, school ID, library card. They have to turn in a work permit if they're under eighteen and still in high school. They must qualify for one of the funding categories, will review and confirm that they qualify, and if there are any spots available. We do accept applications year-round. This is only open for the residents of Hawaiian Gardens between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four that have a right to work. You've approved new allocations for this fiscal year. In the last council meeting, we've received seventy-two slots in the various funding stream. Last year, we were granted sixty-five, and they did give us an additional five, so we're about the same this year. There are sixty-five applications currently on the waitlist. And out of the participants that are, that have turned in an application, just so that you guys are aware, forty-six percent are returning participants, and fifty-one are new participants that have never been into this program. So very popular program, and as you guys can see, there are many of our participants that are returning. The program just started last week and I hit the ground running. There are already thirty people enrolled in the program, and eight of them are already working at their work sites. So that makes it a total of ninety-five applications that we started with this fiscal year, which is wonderful. Some of the challenges that we have had this year are the changes. The Technical Assistance Guide, which is a reference to existing protocols, consists of all forms, continues to change. In fact, it is changing again this year. We are pending a new date and time for that training. Age restrictions can also be a challenge. The permits are, can be a challenge because the permits don't last very long. They last about three or four months, and so we have to keep renewing those every time when they're getting close to expire. Additionally, sometimes the kids go from being fourteen and fifteen and then they turn sixteen. That's a different set of rules for them. And, or maybe they turn eighteen, so that's another different set of rules. So it's making sure that I'm keeping track of all of those permits, when they, when they expire. It takes a lot of collaboration with the youth and the school, actually. Communication contenders continues to be something that is very important. We wanna ensure that there is a good partnership and we improve the experience for the youth. We're happy to answer parents' questions, but we do encourage the youth to work directly with us. We did have a work site shortage this past fiscal year. Ninety-nine cent store closed down, and so did Party City. That did affect us, and it definitely was a challenge this past fiscal year. Moving on to the successes, I did meet with the City of Artesia counselors. That was a great meeting, so I was able to meet with every counselor at the school, and they were able to hear about the program, who can benefit, benefit from it. I gave them flyers, applications. They were also able to help me with an issue I was having with permits. The per, the person that was there doing the work at that time was giving them out every month. And I inquired about that, and they were able to actually fix that issue and start giving me permits that were three to four months out instead of every month. So that was really, really helpful. Because of this work site shortage, we did, I did go out and canvass the neighborhood and try to add new work sites, and we were successful. Bears and Roses, Claire's at the Cerritos Mall, a hair salon, Kidstown, Metro Flex and Straight-Up Tacos are some of the businesses that we've added that are new. Additionally, some of our students or participants, I should say, have actually been hired on by some of these work sites, which is such a great thing, like Dami Dental and Straight-Up Tacos. Those are two of the businesses that hired some of our participants. And that just shows that they have good work ethic and the necessary skills to do the job. So we're really proud of them. Our waitlist, we, last year we had sixty on the waitlist when we started the program. This year, as I mentioned, there were already more than eighty, right before we started the program, so that was great. Another thing that was a success or binders, the Columbia University is the one that created this program, and they revamped it last year, so it's a brand-new program. And we created binders so that the participants can actually keep them and use them as a resource when they leave the program. We've, we've also implemented new badges for those participants that are working, especially within the city, that allows them to be identified as participants. And it has a little logo if they are a participant that doesn't want that, that photos, that they don't want photos to be taken for, of, of them. There's a little signifier that shows a camera with an X on it. So that's how we know we can't take any pictures of those particip, participants. We also found a new shirt vendor, and that new vendor, we were able to lower the cost, but keep the quality of the shirts. A big shout-out to Recreation for adding us to our flyer, to their flyer, I should say, in their program book. That was really helpful, and we got a lot of new applications because of that. These are some of the businesses, or I should say, all of the businesses that support this program. Old Navy, Straight-Up Tacos, Hair Lounge, Covenant Kids, Bears and Roses, Valentinos, Dami Dental, Metro Flex, Kidstown, Claire's, The Way Out Ministries, Loaded Protein, Hawaiian Gardens, and all of the various departments from City Hall, C D D, Public Safety, Recreation, Le Ware, Youth Sports, Teens, the Teen Center, and Public Works. This is the, the recognition we did of some of our newer work sites that we got this past fiscal year. A couple of them weren't able to make it, so they sent me these lovely pictures. On the right side, you'll see the lovely folks from The Way Out Ministries. And then on the bottom, that's Maria from Old Navy. And then the other picture are all the participants that were able to come in from Straight-Up Tacos, Loaded Protein, Covenant Kids, and Dami Dental. And I actually spoke at The Way Out Ministry this April, and I talked about the Y E P program, so that was, that was nice. So these are some of our participants who have agreed to be photographed, except for one person, which we have protected their identity with a little smiley face. But you'll see them at work. Covenant Kids had two of our participants working, and you'll see them on the left side, working with some of the children. And on the right side, you have two participants that worked out, worked at The Way Out Ministry. These are pictures from our group convening and one of the trainings that I did. Group convening is something that we do with participants after they've been working for forty hours. We bring them together, and we talk about any challenges that they're having at work, and we work those out. Just a time to really just reflect and, and go over any issues that they may be having in the workplace. Moving on to statistics, the, this slide is gonna show you where all of our youth are deciding to work. As you can see, Old Navy is very popular, followed by Youth Sports, A T G M, and C Robert Lee. This is a fun one, so this is our enrollment by funding category. Fifty-five percent of them are under O U Y, thirty-one under system-involved youth, and then fourteen under Cal Works. The total hours worked this year were eight thousand five hundred and five. Total wages earned were a hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy cents. That's an increase from last year. And the average time that a participant spends in the program to complete their time, the hundred and sixty hours, is about twenty-one weeks, and that equates to about five months. That was surprising to me because I was thinking that it was actually about two months, but they're actually spending about five months within the, to complete their hours. And that comes out to an average of two thousand five hundred per participant, which has also gone up. Last year, it was about two thousand per participant. This year, each participant averaged about twenty-five hundred. And we only had five participants that dropped out, and those hours don't go unused. Whatever hours are left on the table are then given to other participants that are still in the program. They can get up to thirty additional hours, and we really utilized those extra hours this past year. And this is something that we did that was fun, just trying to figure out, well, what are they doing with all of this money? So I did this little survey and asked youth, what was the first thing you purchased with your paycheck? We got responses like clothes, a new suit, shoes. I bought my sister a pair of shoes for her birthday, paid off school debt, and bought electronics for college, game card, food, that was pretty popular, a lot of youth said food, and books. I also asked, what is one thing you have purchased with your paycheck that you are proud of? Movie tickets, Christmas gifts, a plane ticket to Europe, Yogurtland, gifts for family, books, AirPods, shoes, food, fishing rod, school trip to Greece, a rugby jersey, a car, giving my mom a hundred dollars to pay one of the bills. How amazing is that? We also wanna know, well, what are you, what's your least favorite thing about working? Sometimes the hours interfere with my schoolwork, figuring out a time and schedule, answering the phone, getting into trouble, I get bored, folding clothes, limited hours due to my age, weather, standing for a long time, walking to work when it's hot, missing out on fun time with friends, and being late. What is your favorite thing about working? Learning new skills, the people that I work with, meeting new people, friendly community, getting paid my paychecks, the experience working with children, feeling more mature about being able to depend on myself more, having something to do, and the air conditioning. So in the works right now, we are still continuing to recruit new business, talking to local businesses and surrounding businesses to try to bring more and diversify the businesses that we have, and documented, documenting all processes so that we have procedures in place. We do have a participant here that has agreed to tell you about his experience. He's worked at Old Navy in the last fiscal year and is currently working at Metro Flex.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marco, and this is my second year in the Youth Employment Program. And I'd like to say that this program has taught me valuable skills, such as networking, and it has taught me to be, to work in a teamwork-friendly environment. Also, this program has given me a sense of independence in a way, and I feel like it has opened up more opportunities for me. And I'd like to thank everyone at the Youth Employment Program and you all for having such program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marco. Now we're gonna open it up for questions. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions, but more of a suggestion. I know that in the past, Recreation and, you know, the city has been a, a, a lot of kids wanna work in our area. So I was wondering if there's a way that we could become a host, but also be like a trainer. And what I mean by that is, in the past, we used to have the Junior Lifeguard Program, which was very popular, and it kind of faded out. So if we became where we like, created the Junior Lifeguard, but also paid the students as participants, then that creates an opportunity where we're the employer, and they're learning actually a, a skill that can be utilized. Because I know that if a student, say, for example, goes through your program and becomes a lifeguard, and they have five, these five months to train, next year, they might not come to us, but they can easily go get a job at Silk City or some of the other. So more than just providing them like a, I mean, what they're doing is great, but we're providing them a skill that they can continue to use every summer, and maybe help themselves, you know, when someone's are off, to, to easily get employed. And those five months, I think, are enough time for them to like actually train, to maybe get certified. So I don't know if that's something that we would be able to do, like kind of partner up Recreation and the Y E, to, to, to develop something like that where they're training and getting, kind of getting paid at the same time.
Yeah, that, that can definitely be done. We just need to work it into our schedule and our programming for this coming year, for this next coming year.
I do wanna comment on that. Unfortunately, the program does not allow the participants to work near bodies of water. So specifically for the pool, they would not be able to work as lifeguards. But I do think that is a great idea and an opportunity. But unfortunately, for the Youth Employment Program, they won't allow the bodies of, the body of water, yeah.
We can inquire some more, but.
Sure.
Yeah, just so we're more familiar with the regulations and all.
Absolutely.
I don't have any questions. I just wanna thank you, Christina, for being so proactive with this program. I know you've been here since February. It's, it was, it was a lot of work, because I know you came in and you kind of had to re-establish how everything worked here, and you have been doing a great job. I just wanna thank you for that. And I just have a quick question. So you mentioned that last year you had sixty-some kids on the waiting list. Those are the priority of kids you call this year, or how does that work?
Right, so those were from the last fiscal year, meaning when we started the program in twenty twenty-four of July, those sixty were already in line to get in with the program. The way it works is, it's really first come, first served. So for instance, last week I started the program, and I called up all of the participants that have been waiting since twenty twenty-four. So if they've been on that list, yeah, so it goes based on when they applied. And I just go down that list, and sometimes the students are no longer interested. They've got another job, so I just keep moving that list up, yeah.
So we don't give priority to first-time applicants? I mean, I just want, because I just wanted to ask, because I feel that we should give also an opportunity to new applicants, because if we do have a waiting list, then when will they be able to, to be able to work? If those, those spaces are already taken?
Right. The, the program does want us to get as many new participants as we can because they want a lot of people to, to know about this program and come through it. And then that's something that we can certainly prioritize moving forward if, you know, that's something that's important to you guys.
Yeah, I think the challenge though, sometimes, I mean, I, I myself worked the, as a recruiter for like twenty years ago, and I think the problem is that oftentimes, a lot of kids apply, but then as you're going through the application, they may not necessarily meet the qualifications because it is, like, there are certain, like the low income or the Cal Works or, and so even though they're on the waiting list, they may not necessarily qualify for some of it.
I make sure they qualify once they submit that application. I look at it, there's very specific questions on that application that'll tell me if they'll qualify or not at that time. And so I'll know for sure if they're on the waitlist, they qualify. One thing I do wanna add on your comment is that the training is only good for twelve months. So that means that if they come back again, they can just come back and go to a work site and work a hundred and sixty hours. But if it's been after twelve months, they have to go through this training all over again. So that's the benefit of being able to. So that's the benefit of being able to bring on some of those returning students.
Thank you, Christina.
Of course.
This is a great program. It's a great opportunity, obviously, for our youth to, you know, get some work experience. And at that age level, I mean, it's very valuable. So, so this process essentially, you go ahead and you contact those that were on the waiting list from twenty-twenty-four, and then you just work your way up. And then, you know, eventually, if those individuals don't get called this year, then they get held on that list for next year. And that's, that's pretty much the process then. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I do want to mention that there are some participants that do get priority. Foster get priority, and any referrals directly from Celico, they also get priority.
And how many individuals do you expect to fill? Or how many positions do you expect to fill with this new cycle?
So we have seventy-two particip, seventy-two spots that they've given us. We expect to fulfill all of them, really, and even more if we can because we have the people. We have over ninety applicants waiting to get into the program. Realistically, with the amount of time that each participant averages in this program, which is about five months, four and a half to five months, that means that, and considering the amount of work sites that we have and the spots that each of those work sites provides, we can probably comfortably do about ninety participants a year. That's our max. We really can't do more if it continues that the participants are taking five months to complete their hours.
Yeah, it just seems like, you know, like you were saying, that window seems to be a little bit longer than what you imagined. And so I wasn't sure if, you know, you have like a certain cutoff period that you have to then have all these individuals working by, if it's by cycle or not, or if it rolls over.
Yeah, so the program officially begins, well, it began last week. It usually begins mid or end July, and it ends in June. And we can train and send participants to work sites pretty much from the beginning to the end of the year. I did a training, I think, my last training, I did it in April, and I had participants work through June. Some of them weren't able to finish their hours. But yeah, if we have the spot, we, we try to fill that spot.
Okay, so I, I guess let us know what we could do in order to help encourage businesses to get, you know, active in this program. Because obviously, we want to do our part as well, so.
Sure.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Marco. I've known you for many years, and I've, you know, just seeing you up there with eloquence and, and your manner of, of speech and your confidence, I'm so proud of you. And I believe that this program had put you in that position where you know, you know, you know what you're doing, and you know where, what type of future you want to invest on. So thank you so much for that. I'm so proud of you, continue what you're doing. I could not emphasize enough how this program is very valuable to our community. I took part in this program, and like I mentioned in the past, we hired two individuals, and we've set a good career for them because they participated in the Youth Employment Program. There is also a resource I'd like to share with you. It's Hawkeye, and they're contracted by, by Celico, and they're also providing programs similar to Youth Employment Program. They're providing work site opportunities, and they're also paying almost a similar amount. So how could we partner with those, with that organization that services Hawaiian Gardens? And how we could intensify our work? Can you share any ideas in terms of partnership?
Yes, so the first thing I can think about is once our participants are done with this program, we can certainly refer them to Hawkeye to, you know, continue getting some more work experience. We also have participants that have tried to apply that don't live in the city. In fact, I had to revise the application to say City of Hawaiian Gardens resident only because there are resident, other cities that, other res, other people that live outside of Hawaiian Gardens that have tried to apply. And so that would be another opportunity is maybe refer them to Hawkeye so that, you know, they can be helped with work experience with them. And maybe those that don't qualify for the program, you know, most of the people that come through do qualify. I've had maybe one or two that didn't qualify for the program, but those people could also benefit from this Hawkeye as well.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you for your wonderful work and your leadership. We appreciate you.
Christina, one last question. Do we know if ABC is still doing it as well, or?
Yes, ABC is still doing it as, as well as our, the City of Artesia.
And so if a student completes time with you, are they able to work in the same fiscal year at ABC? Or is it one cycle per year?
One cycle per year, yeah. They will not be able, they can't go to ABC after they've done the program here. In fact, the system wouldn't even allow you to, to add them. Yeah.
Well, I just wonder if they're as successful as your program in filling all those spots. And if they're not, maybe we could refer some of the kids on the waiting list in their direction to potentially get in over there.
So something that we've done in that case, like the five additional spots that I got, I actually reached out to Murren, and I said, hey, I have all these participants still waiting. Can I have any additional spots? They take those spots from some of the other, some of the other locations, and then they gave me those five. So actually, yeah, they, they can, and vice versa with us. I think there was a year that we couldn't fulfill all the spots, and then they took some of those and gave them to another provider. Yeah.
One more question. I'm sorry, Christina. So is there any limits on how far the business can be from Hawaiian Gardens? Because that, I know that that could be a challenge for our, you know, our younger participants that might not have a vehicle. They don't, obviously, they can't drive. And if they don't have a way to get there, what are the limits of how far from the city? Or where are you look, how far can you look out for businesses?
I'm not aware that we have any limits, but I am trying to keep it local, meaning like the surrounding cities. City of Long Beach, for instance, and the shopping center is right next door to us. If we go the other way, right in front of the cemetery, one of my locations is right, right across there, so also not too far. And then I think probably the furthest would be the Kid Zone in Lakewood. But one of the things that we do, because we understand that some of them are at the mercy of their parents, giving them rides. We do provide bus passes for the participants if needed. We have supportive services, and they can use set supportive services to get a bus pass.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then we also have participants that are eighteen, and they're driving. So those are also areas that would benefit them.
Okay, so the younger kids, you try to put them within, within the city?
Not necessarily. It's where, it's, it's based on availability, what's available at the time, and what are their interests.
Okay. Thank you, Christina.
Is there any more? Thank you, Christina. We appreciate your work. Next item, agenda, agenda organization. This is a time for the City Council to discuss any changes in the order of the agenda items. Would any council member like to make any changes to the agenda?
No, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Before that, Mayor, there was one change to the business items.
Discussion items?
Discussion items.
Yeah, discussion items, yes, sorry.
Yes. So for discussion item, we're going to move up discussion item number three to be the first one to be discussed.
The motion can include that change.
Yes, I'll make the motion with the adjust correction.
All right, I'll second that.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaola?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, public hearing. Public hearing number one, recommendation to conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution number zero-two-one-dash-two-zero-twenty-five for approval of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Community Development Block Grant Program and Budget. We have a staff report.
Thank you. In preparation for our application for participation in the Los Angeles County Twenty-Twenty-Five, Twenty-Twenty-Six Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, we require to provide the residents an opportunity to provide input on housing and community development needs. This public hearing will meet the citizen participation requirements of the program, and it was properly noticed, as you'll see on attachment B. The L.A. County Development Authority has notified the city that the estimated allocation for this fiscal year is one hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-five thousand and ninety-nine dollars. For this program year, there are two projects, which are the same projects we've done every year. Street improvements, which in conjunction with other funds, will provide replacement of damaged areas, gutters, removal of barriers, material barriers, installation of ADA compliant curbs, ramps, repairs to cracked and uneven sidewalks, and reconstruction of cracked and damaged streets. And the locations are listed that are included on the list this year. So Civic Center Drive from Pioneer to Norwalk, Two Twenty-First from Sane to Juan Avenue, Two, Two Hundred and Fourteenth Street from Elaine Avenue to Norwalk Boulevard, Two Hundred and Twenty-Second Street from Belshire Avenue to Wardham Avenue, Two Hundred and Twenty-First Street from Juliette Avenue to Norwalk Boulevard, Farlow Street from Claretta Avenue to the end of the cul-de-sac, and Wardham Avenue from Two Twenty-First to Two Twenty-Fourth Street. The other project that we use is public service. And there is a limit to how much you can use. You can use only fifteen percent of your allocation. This year, however, you'll notice that we allocated less than the fifteen percent to provide more for the street improvements. We'll have neighborhood cleanups allocation of nine thousand and ninety-nine dollars. But there are other funds available that we've allocated for those cleanups, so we will continue to have them. Just they will be funded with less of the CDGB funding.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? I'd like to open the public hearing for public comment.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
There being no more comments, the public hearing is now closed. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
Rocco, please.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaola?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, consent calendar. Does any council member want to pull any agenda items from the consent calendar for separate discussion?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
My second.
Rocco, please.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaola?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, discussion. We're going to move to discussion number three. Recommendation to disclose the costs providing a retirement incentive program to eligible employees as required by Government Code Section seven-five-zero-seven. Is there a staff report?
There will be a staff report presented by our Labor Council. She should be joining us through Zoom.
Isabel, can you hear us? You're muted.
Good evening. This is Isabel Safi. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. As Mr. Marquez indicated, I am Isabel Safi. I am a partner with the law firm of Best, Best and Krieger. Best, Best and Krieger serves as city attorney for the city, and I serve a special counsel on benefit matters for the city. The item before the council today is a disclosure of costs related to a proposed early retirement incentive program. Government Code Section seven-five-zero-seven requires that in advance of the council considering the incentive program for approval, it must first disclose the anticipated costs connected with that program. Once the disclosure of costs occurs, the council must wait at least two weeks before it can consider approval of the incentive program and have it moved forward. The staff report that was submitted for this item includes a preview of the proposed parameters of the program. But again, that, the, the, the program itself will not be up for approval consideration until two weeks from today, at the very least. But for your reference, those proposed terms of the program, subject to change based on council feedback ahead of the approval, are that any employee of the city that is eligible to service retire, that means meeting the requirements under the CalPERS program, which is either age fifty for classic employees or age fifty-two for PEPRA employees, and a minimum of five years of CalPERS service credit. So anyone who meets those parameters would be eligible to elect to participate in this program. The program is going to be limited to twelve participants, so it's going to be a first-come, first-served program. That number is based on the prior allocation that the council approved for the retirement incentive program of up to three hundred thousand dollars for the incentive program. So the amount of the incentive for those employees who elected to participate and meet that twelve threshold or are within that threshold is a twenty-five thousand dollar lump sum payment. That is going to be considered wages for federal and state payroll tax purposes, so it will be subject to customary withholding. But other than that, it will be a lump sum payment that the participant will be able to use at their discretion. At this time, the expected window would be from August twenty-fifth to October tenth. That is because the expected approval of the program, or consideration for approval, that is, of the program is expected to occur on the thirteenth of August at your next regular council meeting. And giving about a one-week period in between the anticipated approval and the window opening for notification to be provided via a written notice to employees, then the recommended start date of that window would be August twenty-fifth. The minimum period that the federal guidelines require for a employee to consider whether or not to participate in the program is forty-five days. And that is why the, the end of the window is October tenth. So that means that eligible employees would have from August twenty-fifth through August tenth to determine whether to participate, and if so, submit the agreement that is required as part of the program. Again, these are proposed terms. The approval of the program wouldn't happen until August thirteenth, and the council is within its rights to change the parameters of the program if it seems appropriate. One, the conditions of participating in the program include submittal of an agreement, what I mentioned earlier, and also require that the employee submit verification of their election or their application to service retire from CalPERS. Currently, the proposed date of retirement or the effective date is no later than October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. That is a date that we suggested as it's proximate to or close to the closing of the proposed window, and it would allow for a more efficient separation from, of employment relative to the end of the window. Of course, you can always choose to extend the retirement date condition to the incentive program. But one thing to keep in mind is that the longer the retirement date window is, the longer the payment takes to be made because the payment is only made after there is a, a service retirement that has occurred. The last requirement, or the last condition of the program is a supplemental agreement that is signed for the period between when they elected to participate in the program and their actual retirement date. And that's intended to make sure that all relevant requirements of the incentive program are met. And that's intended to make sure that all relevant requirements of the incentive program are met. Again, the item before the council today is want to give you a preview of the proposed parameters, but most importantly, to meet the requirements of Government Code Section seventy-five oh seven, which provide that the anticipated cost of the program needs to be disclosed in a public meeting. And as stated earlier, the anticipated cost of the program, assuming that all twelve spots are taken up, meaning all, up to twelve employees elect to retire, would be three hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, because the payment is treated as a wage payment, would be the anticipated payroll tax obligation that applies to the city as the employer. And our estimate of that, assuming, again, that you have twelve participants, is twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in payroll taxes. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer. Any questions that the council may have?
It's now open for discussion?
I actually do have a question. Since this item had been brought up in the past, what would be the, would we have to prove that there is a, like, a financial gain on behalf of the city per employee? Like...
You mean, like, some type of cost?
Like, some type of cost saving based on the employee that's gonna retire? Or is this a cost-saving assumption for anybody that's willing to take that retirement?
What you're referring to, I believe, is one of the requirements that apply to the Golden Handshake, which is a CalPERS early retirement incentive program. Under that program, which is not the one being pursued by the city, there is a representation that needs to be made regarding the expected benefit of the incentive program being such that you are able to avoid significant terminate, separations, for example, or achieve savings. That, again, is a requirement under the Golden Handshake. It is not a requirement for purposes of the Early Retirement Incentive Program. In, under the Early Retirement Incentive Program that the city is considering here, the impetus for it is whatever the city determines is the, the, the reason for pursuing it, which my understanding is to ensure that the city continues to be fiscally sound.
Right. So then at what point are we protecting ourselves from, like, a gift of public funds?
Isabel, do you wanna take that?
Sure. So the, the gift of public funds doctrine refers to providing a benefit that isn't connected to a value to the city. The expectation of the program here is that by incentivizing employees to retire sooner than would otherwise be expected, the city is achieving overall savings in its pension obligations because there will not be any further accrual of pension obligations related to long, longer-term employees. So there is, even though the impetus may not be overall cost savings, there are going to be cost savings associated with the program overall. And that is sufficient to make it a permissible program, not one that would run afoul of the gift of public funds doctrine.
The other question I have is, once someone decides to go through the program, do we have a time limit for them to, like, actually? Like, what would be their time limit for them to say, like, this is the date that I choose to retire? Someone could say, hey, I wanna go through this program. Here's my paperwork. I'll retire next year. Is, is there a limitation on what that retirement date has to be?
So currently, the proposed parameters of the program require that the retirement be no later than October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The federal regulations around the Early Retirement Incentive Program don't establish a particular time period by which the retirement needs to occur, but the city can and should establish a deadline by which that retirement must occur. Again, currently, the proposed date is October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, precisely for the reason that you note, which is we don't want to have an open-ended retirement condition.
Is there any more discussion?
My final question is, do we have any limitations as if someone was to retire? And then can they come back after the six months that the CalPERS, like, let's say they reapply or, or they needed, they're needed as consultants or whatever the case may be? Are we placing any limitations on that?
The, there's two considerations relative to that. The working after retirement rules that apply with respect to anyone who has service retired from CalPERS precludes someone who has taken an early retirement, early retirement incentive from returning to work as a retired annuitant within a hundred and eighty days. Once those hundred and eighty days have passed, then they could return to work as a retired annuitant without having to reinstate from their retirement. With respect to any other provision that would preclude them from returning to work for the city, I, 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 I don't... That is a question that I would have to confer with my Labor Council to make sure that the city is able to put that limitation within the agreement. But generally, the rules, the parameters of a program do anticipate a clean break from employment, meaning that there's no expectation or allowance for them to reapply for, for employment.
So Isabel, just to clarify, that would be something contractual that would be included as part of the release agreement? That would be the expectation?
Correct. But that is something that I would wanna confirm.
We'll confirm. We'll confirm. But yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Just a general question. Of these twelve potential participants, how many do we think we may have that will take advantage of it?
Isabel, I'll take it. So we've identified a total of, I believe, twenty-one who may be eligible. So because the amount of the incentive is twenty-five thousand, that only allows for twelve folks to take advantage of, of the program based on the funds that were approved by City Council through the budget process.
So my next question is, is that like a first come, first served? It's like whoever says, hey, I'm, I'm interested. I wanna move forward. Here's my paperwork.
If you, if you do recall, both unions, I believe, raised the issue of possibly incorporating some type of program into the negotiation process. But we did opt to address this separately. So yeah, it's, it's gonna be based on a first come, first served. And there are several people waiting or who've expressed interest.
To clarify for the council, this is a no-action item. It's simply a disclosure item. So there's no, no action requested of the council at this time.
So Isabel, we don't need a motion to approve this?
That is correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Since there's no any more discussion, we're gonna move to another discussion item.
Thank you, Isabel.
Thank you.
Good night.
Recommendation to consider, a recommendation from the Public Safety Commission that the City Council consider directing staff to conduct a traffic study. Do you have a staff report?
So Mayor and members of the City Council, this item was obviously continued from last meeting. We do have an update to provide you, and Nima will be providing that update.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members, and the residents. In regards to the speed home policy that, if you remember, we discussed last time, if council wants, we can definitely bring back this item as far as, you know, draft a study or, kind of like, draft a speed home policy to adopt it by City Council and review it. In regards to speed home, we need direction from City Council to perform the study. We reached out to our engineering team, and they calculated and estimated that the cost is going to be around eight to ten thousand dollars. In order to support the installation of speed home, we need the backup of traffic data, which is traffic counts, speed data for the segments that you're selecting. And based on that feedback from traffic engineer, we will be able to bring back this item to, to discuss further about the installation of speed home or any other traffic calming measures if they recommend.
So, so as a, in summary, there was a couple of questions raised. What were the options in reference to speed humps? So we did meet with our traffic engineer, and it was determined that the current traffic study would need to be updated. So that, that's definitely something that, if you're interested in doing, we would need direction from you to, to do. And aside from that, we also need a new speed home policy, which, which would be the two items that would be needed if, if the City Council is interested in, in pursuing that direction.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that when, if you are to approve the study, it has to be done during the school year. That way, it could add to the variable. Thank you. Is there any more discussion on this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. But in that motion, do I need to actually include?
Direction.
Direction that we actually create a speed, a speed home policy first? And then from there, continue on to actually have the, the study done?
Now, the study...
Would have to come back as a approved cost item as well. But this is direction to pursue that.
Now, the, is the study done specifically just for street bumps or humps? Or is it, like, other, what are other alternatives? Because I know in the past, there had been other alternatives presented to us that didn't really require that, like, the, the...
There was alternative recommendations, which we, we tried to implement, most of them. But yeah, we, we, it would have to be a traffic study. And based on the traffic study, I think we, it would be determined by the professionals if speed humps are recommended or not.
Right. But I'm saying, does it include?
Other alternatives?
Does the recommendation, could that include other alternatives? Or is it focused solely on?
No, no, no. Yeah. No, they would provide other recommendations as well.
Motion.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaola?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, recommendation to discuss and provide direction regarding community concerns about federal immigration enforcement in the city and the immigration-related resources available to residents. Do you have a staff report?
Provide a brief staff report. This item was placed on here at the mayor's request. We obviously have had a series of reports that have been circulated through the city of immigration enforcement activity taking place. The city has been proactive in a number of ways. We have been providing resources related to anyone seeking services, immigration service-related matters. And we've also been in, in close contact with both the school district and our local sheriff's department just to confirm and share any information that has been circulated on social media. But we are here to discuss this item further at the mayor's request. So if any, anything you guys wanna discuss now would be the appropriate time. I should, I should add that we did take the liberty of directing staff to create a resource guide. So we will have a resource guide. It's just about completed. It will be made available on the website, social media, and we're also gonna be printing copies.
You know, you mentioned that you're gonna be printing copies, but is it something that we can mail out, like a mailer?
Sure.
Of all that information?
Yeah, I'm sure we...
Residents inhabit in Spanish and English?
Yes, I, to me, this would just be more of an opportunity to get some clarification. I know that other cities are doing things as far as, like, enforcing or requesting ICE agents if they come into their communities to at least have the masks off. Is that something that we as a community could do, like, legally? I'm not, I'm not sure what the implications are.
Yeah, with the mask, there is some ambiguity about that. It's certainly something that we can explore requiring. You know, whether or not that's enforceable is, you know, something that we have to look into. But, but, but there, there is ambiguity around that. However, let me add that certainly staff and we can share information about what can be asked, right? So requesting a name, requesting a badge, requesting identification because we obviously want to ensure residents are safe and that there isn't uncertainty about people that are not official federal representatives, taking, taking individuals. So, so we, so absolutely, both staff, community members could ask for that information.
Thank you. And another thing that was actually brought to my attention with one of, by one of our staff members is we don't really have as a, as a community or as a city a plan of action if ICE, for example, was to enter one of our events. Like, for example, we had the Hawaiian Gardens Car Show, and some of our staff members were concerned that ICE could potentially show up. And I don't think we actually have a plan of action. Like, if something like that were, were to happen at, let's say, Fettie Middle School, are they allowed to come into, like, a public school like that? Are we placing a hold on them where they cannot come into the property? I don't think we really have a plan of action as far as our staff and who the point of contact would be to, like, address the situation.
Yeah, we can definitely prepare something. I know there was some talks about, initial discussions were held, but we haven't solidified a formal plan. But we can definitely create something in case that were to happen. But we would have to consult with the school district because it is their property. So we'd probably definitely have to follow their lead if the event is happening at their site.
Like, for example, using the car show as an example, is that considered a public event or a private event? I mean, we are a public...
It's a public event.
Even though...
Even though it's held on the school district property?
But even though we are requ, like, we're asking for a purchase? So, you know what I mean? Like, even though the event is held...
There's a fee.
There's a fee.
Entrance fee.
There's an entrance fee, and it's in partnership with other nonprofits. I mean, we're still a public agency, but the fact that we're charging, does that make it a private event? I mean, that's, that's where I think the, the...
That's a good question.
That's where the staff were confused. And so I think they were hoping, or at least the people I spoke with, were hoping that prior to the event, we as an agency would have sat down with them and said, hey, because of the situation that we're currently in, if something like this were to happen, this is a plan of action, which I don't think we have, but I think we should because these are things that are happening on a daily basis. And so, I mean, they could literally, like, you know, show up anywhere. I don't wanna give a specific example, but it could show up anywhere.
The, the example you're giving, you know, think about it if, from any type of legal enforcement perspective, right? If so, if the sheriff or PD were entering an event like that to address what they would consider a law enforcement issue, they would have access. And so similarly, in this situation, if it's being treated as a law enforcement issue, it's federal immigration enforcement, but it's still, you know, it's being treated as a law enforcement issue. So they would be able to have access. You can, again, ask for identifying information and... a warrant potentially, you know, so there are certainly questions that can be asked, but it it would be, we wouldn't have a strong legal basis to deny them entrance in that situation. Just like we wouldn't for a sheriff to come in and address a legal, a law enforcement issue. I'm sorry, let me just add in and we'll work with Ernesto's team in terms of guidance to staff generally.
Right. And my question just really stems from the fact that a lot of things that are circulating are like where they have to execute a warrant to be able to come in. And I mean, I know people are concerned and and I mean, I've seen that happen when it's like at a private property where the the like it happened at the city of Artesia when, you know, unfortunately, they were they were at a local car wash. The owner actually came out and said, hey, this is a private property. You shouldn't, you don't, if you don't have a warrant, you can't be in here. So I think that's it would be fair for us to be able to explain that to our staff so that they know what can and can't be done because they also don't want to put themselves where like they're interfering with like a, you know, like a law enforcement agency, so. But that's, I I understand that it's like a difficult situ- like, it's hard to project what the situation could be.
Thank you. So we we brought this item in agenda because we wanted to be intentional in our approach so that we could have a concrete plan and like my colleague was mentioning, like, how do we address this? But also it's a multi-layer approach where we wanted to educate our community members with their rights and also being able to provide them with the resource. So we, you know, the city manager and myself and our staff are working on putting together that resource for the community and also communicating with our local agencies. So the Department of Public Health has reached out to us and they wanted to make sure that they're supportive of our efforts. The LA County Department of Mental Health could provide field clinicians for individual individuals, individuals and families that got impacted, especially for those who unfortunately got deported. I know they're going through some trauma and fear. Also, you know, mobile vaccination and health screenings for those families and also emergency food and housing and violence interruption resources. So I think our role here is to, you know, bridge the gap between the realities that we face and as a city that we could be be able to provide those type of resources for our community. So I think with this recommendation for our staff to provide, you know, this resource to our community, I think this is a great action and think is very intentional in supporting our our community. If that may may have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Rocco, please.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number four, recommendation to adopt resolution number zero twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, modifying the effective date of the salary schedule approved by resolution number zero zero four dash twenty twenty-five and adopting a revised salary schedule for employees within the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees Rank and File Unit. Is there a staff report?
Good evening. The staff report presented to council tonight has basically two parts. The first part is simply to seek your approval to have the salary schedule adopted by resolution number zero zero four dash twenty-five twenty twenty-five be retroactive to July first twenty twenty-four for the rank and file employees in order to align with the terms negotiated with the city. The second part is to seek your approval of the salary schedule reflecting the two point five percent COLA increase effective July first twenty twenty-five pursuant to the rank and file MOU approved by resolution number zero four zero dash twenty twenty-four. Even though this two point five percent increase for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five twenty twenty-six was already approved in the MOU, COLPERS regulations require that we have a publicly approved standalone document every time we update our salary schedule. The recommendation is to approve so we can implement any necessary adjustments retroactive to July first twenty twenty-four and process the two point five percent COLA increases reflected on the salary schedule effective July first twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing now, may I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Discussion item number five, recommendation to approve plans and specifications and award a construction contract to Eleknor Belko Electric in the amount of three hundred three thousand three hundred thirteen for the Norwalk Boulevard Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project one one seven. May we have the staff report?
Yes, this item is related to Norwalk Boulevard's pedestrian safety enhancements that was budgeted in fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. And I'm just gonna provide a brief summary about the project and the grant that we received from Caltrans in September two thousand twenty-four. The city's engineering division submitted a grant application to California Department of Transportation under the Highway Safety Improvement Program HSIP Cycle Twelve. The application sought funding for pedestrian safety enhancements along the Norwalk Boulevard corridor, specifically between two fourteen Street and Tilbury Street. The proposed project includes the installation of a hawk intensity high intensity activated crosswalk, which we call it Hawk Signal, at Norwalk Boulevard and two sixteen Street. As part of the safety improvements, the existing crosswalks at two fifteen Street and Tilbury Street will be removed to consolidate the pedestrian crossing and improve traffic, safety and visibility in the corridor. In February two thousand twenty-five, the city was notified that the grant application had been selected for the funding. The project was awarded three hundred fifty thousand dollar in state funding to support the construction and implementation of the proposed improvements. By May two thousand twenty-five, the design phase of the project was completed and a construction bid package was prepared by our engineering team. The project scope includes the installation of traffic signal poles, signal heads, pedestrian push buttons, controller cabinet, pool boxes, conduit, wiring, pavement markings and signage. The work will also include the removal of existing poles, foundations and all other items specified in the approved plans and specifications. On June twenty-five, we received four bid bits from different contractors. The lowest responsive bidder is Eleknor Belko Electric, Inc., with a bid amount of three hundred three thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. Staff recommends that the city council approve the project plans and specifications for the Norwalk Boulevard Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project one seventeen and award the construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Elko, Eleknor Belko Electric in the amount of three hundred three thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. As soon as we schedule the pre-bid meeting with the contractor, we will be able to place the order for the traffic signal poles and usually they're out three to six months. So we will be able in that time to provide the construction schedule and implementation date for the city council. This concludes my staff report and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
It's now open for discussion. Seeing now, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Rocco, please.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Last item, recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with West Coast Arborists for citywide tree maintenance services. Is there a staff report?
Yes, the second item is related to the RFP that we published last month for tree maintenance services. In Public Works Department, we have several contracts with other vendors and we're reviewing all of those contracts to ensure that they are as far as cost wise, they are reasonable and also the terms are updated based on the recent labor law and standards that we have in the department. So far, we have updated over splash pad, HVAC maintenance, and now we're moving forward with tree maintenance services. As you know, the city of Hawaiian Gardens Public Works Department is responsible for maintaining the health and appearance of the city's park and par- parkway trees. For the past ten years, the city has relied primarily on contracted services to perform the majority of tree maintenance activities. In-house staff have supplemented this work by addressing smaller as-needed tasks that require a quicker response. To support the timely and efficient maintenance of city trees, we have issued a request for proposal on June eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. And we were looking for contractors to provide on-call tree maintenance services. The goal was to establish agreements with contractor or contractors to ensure responsiveness and continuity of services. On July nine, two thousand twenty-five, we received three proposals from West Coast Arborist, Inc. of Anaheim, Green Field Landscaping and Maintenance, Inc. of Hacienda Heights, and West Coast Tree Services, Inc. of Redding, California. Following a thorough evaluation of qualifications, experience, responsiveness, references and cost competitiveness, and also with the experience that we had at West Coast Arborist team during emergencies in the past few years, we are recommending West Coast Arborist as a most qualified and responsive proposer. The agreement will cover a broad scope of tree maintenance services, including watering, pruning, removal, plant healthcare and replacement of trees and plants, GPS tree inventory collection and software usage, and Arborist consulting services. Work will be assigned on routine maintenance and as-needed basis under task orders issued and approved by the Public Works Department. With that all, staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with West Coast Arborist, Inc. for the provisions of citywide tree maintenance services for a term of three years with options for two one-year extension terms. This concludes my staff report and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
No discussion. I just have a quick question, Nima. So I know that you said that you received three proposals. Do we have the cost on each? Because I don't see it here in the report. I don't know if it's something that we disclose. But I feel that for transparency purposes, we should have that to see. I mean, we we trust, trust you and you just, it says here, after evaluation of qualification, experience and responsiveness. But I would also like to see what was the bid on each company.
Sure, we can definitely provide a copy of proposals and if, you know, council seeks to see all the proposals moving forward, we can attach it to all the staff reports. The point is, the proposals are based on each item that they are basically providing their cost. Sometimes the vendor number A cost for each item is less than the other vendor and it's not a total cost for the contract that we can say, same as construction contracts, that this is the lowest bidder. So since we have different items in our basically professional services contracts and maintenance services, it's line item and each proposal has a cost. But definitely, we can share the proposals with you and provide a copy of them to the city council for review.
So for this type of service, we don't go based on the the lowest bid? Is that what it is?
It's not a lowest bid. It's basically based on the experience, reference, and each contractor has a line item. For example, pruning of palm trees based on the diameter of the basically tree, they have a price for it. For watering, they have one price. For planting, they have a separate price. And it's not a total cost for each year. It's basically based on each line item that we provided in the RFP. And based on that number, we will be, we were able to evaluate and see which contractor is most qualified. But I can briefly explain what was the reason that we selected West Coast Arborist because they are more resourceful and they have provided these services for the city in the past five years. Greenfield land landscaping and maintenance, they were also their proposal, cost proposal was not following the template that we provided in our RFP. And West Coast Tree Services, Inc. of Redding, California, they were far from us. So their headquarters was in Redding and they were comparing to West Coast Arborist at their offices in Anaheim and they have more resources. That those were the reasons that we selected them. As far as costs, we can provide, as I said, the cost proposals that they submitted with their proposal and we can definitely share those with you.
Thank you, Nima.
Mayor and councilmembers' information, the cost is one of the primary factors as well. But there's other considerations, like Nima mentioned, the experience, the responsiveness. And then they have been very, very responsive to our city in the last five years. Usually respond within a week or two of whatever request we have, so. All of all of that's taken into consideration.
Do we have like a like a budget for like some of those services? Like what, like, you know, like a, like a broad budget to say like, we're not gonna exceed X amount in?
So what we what we've done through the Public Works Department is they identify and and allocate a budget for tree trimming, let's say. And I'm not sure what what you budgeted this past year, but.
It's in the body of the contracts. Since you're going to, it's attached to the staff report. It says it's not gonna exceed two hundred thou- two hundred thousand dollar for the, you know, duration of the contract that we have. Also, we budgeted these items under the contract services budget that we have in Public Works Department budget for each fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we have budgeted, I guess, about three hundred thousand dollar over contract, you know, over contract services for definitely to cover all the emergency and routine tree maintenance services.
Need a motion, I make a motion to approve. I'll second that motion.
Rocco, please. Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, new business. Is there any new business? Seeing now, oral staff report.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Just uh, just want to highlight some some of our hard work our staff has been doing this past summer. Obviously, summer is winding down for us. And we have had, you know, some successful programs that our staff are currently working on. Just some numbers here. Our youth baseball have started this week is the first week of games. We have about a hundred and eighty participants participating in our youth baseball program. In our swim lesson program, we have served over a hundred and eighty-eight individual signups for swim lessons to teach kids safe around water. And then we have, in the month of June, we served one thousand three hundred and seven lunches to our youth in our community. Our summer camp has been filled for both sessions. And like I said, the staff are working very hard and making sure our programs are staying at quality and, you know, we're providing a safe and fun atmosphere for all our participants. With that said, we also have our, we had some past two good events, our Fourth of July event and our car show. Unfortunately, no, those big situations occurred. We had some good participation at our Fourth of July and our car show. And then our upcoming events that we're working on is our concert in the park on August eighth and our event in October, which is the golf and Halloween events. Thank you.
Thank you. So so we finished our soccer program, right? So maybe moving forward to every after season, I recommend that we could have like a quick one-minute video of a recap of that season. So moving forward, maybe we could create something like that, just like what you did in our other programs. That way we could see this is the magnitude of our work in that particular sport. Thank you. And thank you again, staff, the recreation for all your work. Thank you. Let's move on to the city attorney report.
Nothing for me, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Or a council report?
Yes, I'd like to report I had the opportunity to turn the, attend the conference in San Diego. And just one of the things that was brought up during the conference is disaster preparedness and how fast you have to react as a community to address some of the different challenges. And, you know, we've been very fortunate at the city of Hawaiian Gardens to not have very ma- major issues. But it does bring to light how. But it does bring to light how prepared or how not prepared we are to face an emergency. Like, for example, the issues that during the LA fires, how the LA, County of LA send those false alerts. And leads us to question whether we as a community have something where we would be able to notify all our residents in case of like a real life-threatening emergency. So it is good that, you know, we attend these conferences to get some of that. Unfortunately, sometimes we feel like the information that is presented, at least in my opinion, it's a little, not outdated, but it's after the fact. I think some of these conferences were being more beneficial if we were presented with information that is like current. An example, another example that they presented was talking about bonds and, and the reissuing of bonds, and that's something that we explored as a, as a city council and as a community. But unfortunately, when it came to us, like we kind of already had missed the window of opportunity that, that was available. And so I think it, we had to continue to be involved, but also kind of request information that we feel is relevant to the current climate of what communities are, are going through.
I was also fortunate to attend probably one of the, the topics that was somewhat relevant is the AI feature that a lot of cities are starting to implement. The City of Hawthorne has taken the lead in regards to having an AI chat feature on their website that allows a residence that maybe can't come to City Hall in the time of the manor, or maybe they, they go on a Friday and the staff isn't there, and so allows them the, the ability to still communicate and get information, access to resources. Let's just say, for example, they want to learn about recreation program, signups, maybe information on ADUs, whatever it may be. The, the AI feature would help, you know, feed or provide some type of guidance to the resident, and then they could follow up if they needed to directly with, with the community, the city. So that's something that's, you know, kind of in the works for some communities that they're experimenting with. And I just, I'm just interested to see how successful that they're getting in terms of the feedback from other communities. In addition to that, over the weekend, I had the pleasure of actually going camping with a number of the teens from the teen center, as well as the rugby team. It was a great experience overall. I know it's been a while since the city has had an opportunity to take the youth camping. I think it's been about three years or so. So we went up to Bishop, and there is, I, I believe somewhere around twenty-five teens, I'm just guesstimating. But it, it was, it was a really great opportunity to really take the youth out of their element and, and really appreciate nature. You know, I, I was just sharing the story with my wife, is that, you know, we, we often pass Bishop in that area and never have really sat down and appreciate that, that location, and the lakes that are there are, are just, they're really, really, you know, beautiful. And so for us to have this opportunity to really, you know, take the time and, and explore was really great, and a lot of the kids had a great time. Thanks in part to staff, because it was a really well-organized event. And, and there was just a lot to do. They're well-fed. So it, it was a great event, so.
I just want to share that I was able to assist the car show that was put on by several car car clubs. I want to thank the Towbars, Mungia, Southeast, Com- Compass, and all of the car clubs that participated in this event. I also want to thank all of the staff, because it was a great event. Like, every year, you guys do a great job. Everything was very organized. Everything was on time. I just want to, I can't thank you enough for, for everything you guys do for the community, and I look forward to having it next year. Also, I want to remind the community that August fifth is our national night out. Please come out. There's going to be lots of games, food, music. It's going to be a great time. I hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to report back that I had the opportunity to attend the conference, and like what my colleague was mentioning about emergency plan, I know that we have some emergency plan in place, and we have a regular drill, so it's fortunate that we have, you know, we have that type of efforts. One of the topics that we talked also, that we also talked about was the youth programs. And I was sitting there, just listening to the presentation, and it gives me so much pride that our city has really one of the best, you know, cities that provide youth programs. You know, we have this Cradle Two Career Program, and, and I was so, beaming with pride that we have different opportunities for youth. So I'd like to commend our, our recreation program for the incredible work that you've done, and I think some cities are still developing those, and we are so proud that we have, you know, the, the youth sports, we have the ATGM, we have the teen center, and, you know, the rec room. And it's amazing how our city has been able to provide those for our teens. So congratulations to our city. And like I said, just sitting there makes me, gives me so much pride. I also had the opportunity to attend the car show. It was well-participated. Thank you so much for the organizers, for the Towbars, for the Migias, and the Com- Compassy Southeast, and also for our staff. You know, they woke up so early in the morning at three-thirty, just to be here at four. It's a lot of work, but thank you so much for putting together a safe and fun family event, and thank you for the support of the nearby car clubs. With that, that's my council report.
Next item, closed session. Will the city attorney please read the closed session item?
Hey, mayor, yes, at this time, the council will meet in closed session. We'll be discussing public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven for the city manager.
City council, we recess to closed session at seven thirty-six PM. Have a great night.
Now reconvene from closed session. The city council meeting as you convene from closed session at 8:12 PM. Will the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Farfan.
Here.
Councilmember Roa.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio.
Here.
Mayor DePaola.
Here.
We have the quorum.
Will the city attorney please report out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session with all members being present except for Councilmember Vargas. The council heard the items identified on the agenda and no reportable action was taken.
There being no further business, I hereby adjoint this meeting at 8:13 PM to the next council meeting to be held on Wednesday, August 13, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Have a great night.